Everyone, if I could have everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Linda Schele.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. So jumping right into this meeting, special recognition and tributes, we do not have any. Good evening and welcome to the 2009th Regular Meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, February 10, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Schele?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here.
And we have all seven members of council in attendance. I'm going to move on to entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that we held on January 15, 2025. Counsel?
So moved. Support. Support.
So Toy, Tashnik, do we have any comments from the council? Anything from the audience on the minutes from the January 15 meeting? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Schele?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes carry seven to zero. I'm going to jump right into audience communication, and this is for items that are not currently on the agenda. So if you're here for an item that is not, please make your way to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Name and address. You know the drill.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Steve King, 33950 Coventry. I just want to talk about the garbage cans, just a few comments. You've got the 96 to the 64 gallon garbage cans, and the pickleball, the pickleball crowd does not like them. So I'm just going to give you some comments I've heard in my own personal experience. I believe 64 should have been the default size. Everybody should have got the small ones, and then if you wanted the big one, you could have got that. I didn't want either one. I had one that Sam said I could use, it's 64 gallon, it works with the truck, and so now I got these two big monstrosity things I can't use, and you've got to hide. I've driven around the city, and those things are in people's yards, they're ugly, they're terrible. Also, whoever you hired, I don't know, I can't remember who it is, Priority Waste, whoever it is, they do not have the equipment to lift those and put them, put the stuff in the truck. They don't have the equipment. So you've got three guys trying to lift that big 96, and then trash is going all over the place. And additionally, $4 million we spent for these, made in Mexico. Really? We couldn't have found, I've made three phone calls, there's manufacturers in Michigan, there's manufacturers in Ohio, but no, we had to get the ones made in Mexico. Okay. Done with that rant, if I have any time left. For lease signs. Start at downtown Livonia, Farmington, drive in any direction, and in 10 minutes, you'll count 50 of them. On Middle Belt, there's some, there's more for lease signs than there are actually business signs. Okay, it's time to have a commission to revisit our sign ordinance, and what are the, who are those signs for? It's a terrible look that every single building is empty in the city of Livonia, and additionally, that's not how you lease property, you use a broker. It's all done digitally. Have you heard of Zillow? It's all online. Okay? So a little sign on the building, fine, but it's just a terrible look, and we've been doing that since the 50s. Come on, do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. All right. Everybody, if I may, listen, I'm just going to, if we can, I know that this is a big night, and everybody would like to have their voices heard, but we do have to conduct this professionally. Please try to limit any applause and anything if we could. I don't want to use the gavel, I promise you. I've had to do it the last time, I don't want to do it. So these are just common things, we're going to let everybody be heard, but if you guys could follow that, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you. I'm going to go to you. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is PG, and I'm going to give my PO box where I get my bills, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I own a home in Southfield, and I'm in your neighboring community. I just wanted to say to the people tonight, not to be disruptive to council, if you want to clap, this is how people clap in sign language, so this would be a much better thing to do than clap. I just wanted to impress upon the elected officials up there, and you probably heard the name Robert Gibbs, he's one of the most notable planners in the world. And Robert Gibbs said something at an event that I was at, and he said that just because an area is zoned for a particular business, if that business does not have the character of everything else in the community, you're under no obligation as an elected official to approve that business. So as you move forward on your agenda tonight, I just want you to keep that in mind. I'm so happy to see everybody coming out tonight. We just want to know what's on your minds, or what's in your mental closet, and I look forward to speaking further down the line. Thank you so much, and don't forget, do this instead of clapping.
Thank you, everyone. Listen, I approve with that, fully. Thank you.
I've never seen the crowd like this all at once.
Mr. Martin?
Well, thank you.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Christopher Martin.
Wait, Mr. President, does he get one minute, or?
Nah, he's going to get the three. He gets a three.
I'm going to get the three.
You got it? Hey, no.
Yeah, Mr. Donavick. Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan. Earlier today, I happened to really have the privilege of being in the 35th District Court in Plymouth, Michigan. And I was there, basically, an assault that was done on me, not something that I had done incorrectly. But being there, I kind of learned a little bit about that courthouse and compared it to ours, and that's what I'm going to talk about right now. That courthouse serves Canton, the city of Canton, the city of Northville, Northville Township, the city of Plymouth, and Plymouth Township. In the city, this is, I'm going to give you the 2023 census. In Canton, it's 98,041. City of Northville, 5,982. Northville Township, 31,073. City of Plymouth, 9,153. Plymouth Township, 2,781. You add those together, and that courthouse out there serves 171,330 people in those five particular communities that I just mentioned. Our 16th District Court, which cost 10 million to build years ago, it's about the same size, that serves 92,185, according to the 2023 census for the city of Livonia. That's why they can't break even over there. That was built there because our old courthouse supposedly had mold in it, the boiler was bad, and there was a couple other minor things. After that, White Elephant was built over there. What took place was then they went in, put a new boiler system in the old courthouse that they're going to knock down for the future development here of a downtown. But really, that courthouse, if you're familiar with Livonia, as I am, was basically built because certain individuals wanted it built. It wasn't built because it was going to be needed, in my opinion, it was built so somebody could put their family name on it. And I find that when my taxes went to bill that, and others, so somebody could put their name on it. I was against that when it first happened. Five people decided to do that, okay? But that courthouse is overbuilt and will never be profitable, and will always take money out of the general fund to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, you've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Marcus LaBoga. I live in Redford Township, Michigan, 19195 Centalia Avenue in the county of Wayne. My topic for discussion is safe, accessible pedestrian and cyclist corridors and inadequate public transit system. The city of Livonia, in my conviction, in my feelings, lacks on several points on all three topics that I brought up. Pedestrian corridors should have lined sidewalks with adequate observation for motorists to observe those standards. For cyclists, many areas lack bike lanes other than the sidewalk to ride safely, so they're not obstructed by traffic or endanger themselves while riding. But the most important issue for me this evening is the lack of public transit in Livonia. Livonia's neighboring communities such as Redford Township, Dearborn, Farmington Hills, and of course Detroit, has adequate public transit systems through Smart Bus and DDoT. I understand that it's a millage issue here in Livonia, but it's in my, it's in our community interest here, it's in our community interest in Redford, and should be in Livonia to address public transit in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin, do you have a follow-up?
Consent.
Oh.
Waiting for the consent.
Perfect. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record?
John Pastor, 33461 Capri Court. And I'm here to actually congratulate you on your alumni hockey game yesterday, but also want to bring up our alumni hockey game, which is the Detroit Red Wings versus the Montreal Canadiens. It's going to be March 15. This will be our third event for the GH Pastor Foundation for Kids. I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to this game. It's also Vladimir Konstantinov, it'll be his second hockey game that he is skating in. It is sled hockey. We also have the USA and Canadian Olympic sled hockey team playing before our game, so come on out. It's at Big Boy Arena, March 15. Tickets, you can go to the GH Pastor Foundation for Kids website and stuff and buy tickets and get any information for sponsorships and/or getting your tickets and stuff. So looking forward to everybody coming out, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Pastor, that is a great event. Anything else for general audience communication? Seeing none? Oh. Again, these are items that are not on the current agenda. Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Stephanie Richards. I'm actually here on behalf of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. How are you all? You probably, some of you may have received an email from me, I think I met a couple of you at the Western Wayne, but I just wanted to come to all the communities that I kind of represent. I am the community liaison for Western Wayne, so I manage about 15 cities and townships within my purview, so I like to get around and kind of see what it is the issues that each community has, so that I can know how we can better serve and assist and what you need. So I just wanted to formally introduce myself to those who may have not met me already. You will be working very closely with me, I look forward to helping out in any way that I can in the community, and I just wanted to come up and say hello.
Hello, thank you so much, I appreciate it, we all do. Anybody else? Seeing none? I'm going to close the audience communication, and now I'm going to jump right to council announcements. Just going to start off with the fun stuff, we do have new data on item number 17, and we do have a Capitol Outlay Committee meeting that's going to be held here in the council chambers on February 5, so if you're interested. I'm going to open up the council, let me go to Councilwoman Bazinski, then I'll go to Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, Council President. It is on. I just had a couple of announcements to share, excited to have full room to share it with. We have the next Livonia Women's Connection that I've been hosting now for three years with Councilwoman Toy. It's a free networking event for women, or anyone who wants to attend. This is going to be hosted by Kilo &amp; Co., which is a retail fashion company located here in Livonia in the industrial corridor, Thursday, February 6, from 6 to 8 p.m. It's totally free and open to anyone who wants to show up, no registration. I also wanted to share that I do host monthly coffee hours. My last one was last Saturday, I talked about what it's like to run for council. For those of you who don't know, we have four open seats for council this coming year. I was able to record that coffee hour, so if you want to watch it, you can go to my Facebook page. I have some really exciting guests for my upcoming council or coffee hours. Chief Grolski will be joining to talk about the Livonia Police Department on February 15, on March 22. The library director, Kristen Edson, will be there to talk about library programings and the future of our libraries here in Livonia. On April 26, Mayor Brosnan will be joining to talk about the Livonia City Center. Those coffee hours will be held at 11 o'clock at the Civic Center Library in the meeting rooms. On May 17, we will actually be meeting at Newburgh Village because the library was unavailable that month, and it's 11 o'clock. I always do regular council updates, I take questions, you know, we talk about what's been happening in council. I'm also going to invite all the candidates who are running for council to come and speak for those who would like an opportunity to meet those individuals in person or hear from them, and ask them questions, too. The filing deadline is April 22, if I'm correct. So just to give you a heads up about things that are coming to Livonia and other meetings you can attend.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Laura Toy?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, wanted to congratulate you and your team, your hockey team that versed the Red Wings and good old Rob Donavick as well.
Did good.
I heard you two were out there skating, and now your backs aren't the same, and you lost, and all those good things in life. So the main thing is, you have over 800 people there.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry I couldn't be there, I had family obligations, and it's going to breaking barriers for children, and you know more about all that than I do, and it's terrific, and I know Pastor always has his as well, but we're really proud of you and Rob, too, for skating, but more than that, for raising money for a very worthwhile cause. And on that note, I also wanted to say that January is Human Trafficking Month, and I was very involved, and still am, involved with survivors of human trafficking. And we've had over 300-some-thousand children missing in this country, and assumed that they've been human trafficked. Not only that, it goes on every day, it's in your neighborhood, it could be down the street. It knows no social economics, and it's men and women and children, it's not just females. Majority are females. So you want to be on the lookout for the red flags, and if you need any of that, please contact me, and we'll get you brochures and everything else, we go out and public speak. I also wanted to mention a very important day today is Holocaust Memorial Day. Over 6 million Jews were incinerated, for lack of a better way to put it, and killed. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like a few moments of silence for those souls. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it, yeah, and Councilman President, you had a great hockey event, which I'll let you shed more light on, and it was really successful. A lot of residents showed up, I think you helped raise roughly $50,000 for Livonia Kids and Family. Now to compete with Mr. Pastor and his hockey game, you know, he's been doing it a long time, he's got a little bit more gray hair than you do, so he's been around a little bit longer. But he throws a really great hockey game as well, and he's done a lot in our community, and it's nice to see Livonia as hockey town, with so many Red Wing alumni and folks playing hockey in our community for a really good cause. I also want to acknowledge, I know a resident mentioned the trash carts in the city, you know, it is an adjustment. I know city council, we had, I think maybe a half a dozen meetings that were open to the public and discussing sizes, and I'm not going to get into it here, but since we do have so many residents here, it was a really big discussion on, do we do both 96 carts, the smaller 64 carts, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth, so it wasn't something that was just made in haste real quick overnight. There's just a lot of data and opinions from best practices of the existing cart haulers and what they do and what other communities are doing right now. I think if memory serves me correct, the city of Livonia is one of the last communities in the state of Michigan or in the east metro Detroit that shifted to carts. And the reality was, and again, I don't want to talk all night about this and rehash it, but since we do have so many people here this evening, the reality is, is that the cart companies, the trash companies are shifting away from traditional pickup, they don't want to do it anymore, and there's a whole lot of reasons, and there's not many cart suppliers or trash suppliers anymore. There's a small handful of them, and they buy some of the other ones out. So the city really didn't have a whole lot of options there, but we did save a considerable amount of money by shifting to the carts, and it's still a work in progress, and then to the resident's point, with the actual trucks themselves, they're currently transitioning to those new trucks. So some of the trucks have already been updated, and yes, unfortunately, some of the trucks have not been updated, but they knew that going into it, they told us that was the case. They've been well aware of that since the beginning this whole process started, so it's not perfect, but in short, the city saved tax dollars, this was going to happen, whether it happened this trash contract or the contract in the future, it was going to happen inevitably. I think there's only one or two cities maybe left in metro Detroit. So it is a, it is a shift, but my neighborhood looks nice and uniform, and I think in the long run, we'll be happy with it. So that was it, Mr. President, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Anything else from council? All right, so I will dive in, just because we do have so many people, obviously, probably not for, about the hockey game recap, but I must tell you, guys, we do have a great community. We spent $0 on advertising for this game against the Red Wings alumni. We had partners with Alpha USA, we also had financial planners and associates just pick up the jersey, and then we have two teams, because it's halftime, it's not three periods, and literally, everybody was putting butts in the seats. And we sold out right at about 7:52 days before the event, and I always say that that event, without the blood, is like a hallmark hockey movie, because everybody's having a great time, and we raised great funds, watch us get beat up out there, I couldn't even move today. Now, and there wasn't enough Red Bull out there that could wake me up, so appreciate it, and I'm sure there's people in this room that attended, thank you so much. We'll be doing this next year, and we're going to keep going. We hit over 50,000 to Livonia Kids and Families, which is now breaking barriers. So again, thank you to everybody that showed up, and goes to a great cause, you can't get wrong with hockey, and I'm going to put up the hands like this if we want to. Thank you. With that, I don't see any more council communication. I'm going to jump right into reports from the mayor and other city officials, we do not have any. And then after that, I'm going to jump right into the consent agenda. Items 1 through 16 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on January 15, 2025, and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
I'm going to go with Vice President, and I'm going to give Councilwoman Schele the support. Sorry, you're close. Do we have any comments from council on these, on the consent agenda? Seeing none? I'm going to go to the audience. Mr. Martin, you have two minutes.
Yes, I'll try to be brief, Christopher Martin. And this is from the January 15, 2025, 8 o'clock meeting.
It was put on the consent agenda for this evening at that particular meeting.
There was a young man who was here from the Assessor's Department, I'm assuming, never gave his name, never gave his job title, but yet he was supposed to give the location, he never did that, the schedule, he never did that, the dates, never did that, and the times, once again, never did that. So it's unfortunate, because when you go on the city of Livonia website, all you see is Linda Goslin's name as assessor. You don't know who this guy was. But let me just show you one thing here, this is from 2020. This is the job application for the city assessor, I'm assuming that's who he might have been, he never said. Okay? But here's the important thing here. This employee must possess excellent communication skills, as they are responsible for articulating office procedures and legislative issues to the public at large. That guy said absolutely nothing, except stand and laugh, like a 14-year-old might, you know, under the right circumstances, I guess, but really...
30 seconds.
Why do we get that guy back? I'll tell you what, if I was mayor, I'd have fired him the next day. Just to set an example for people to come in here that are getting their salaries paid by the taxpayers and be that incompetent, it's unbelievable. That guy should be ashamed of himself for coming in here and drawing a paycheck.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and just a quick follow-up.
Who was that?
So I will, we'll get you the information, and I can tell you this, having, you know, I'm going to give them a little bit of defense on this, because going up to the podium, it's, it can be challenging, I know sometimes, you're great at it.
I don't know about that.
But I can tell you that in my day job, I work for municipality and sometimes going in front of some items, but we'll make sure, that's probably on me, and I'll make sure we get that right the next time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is communication done?
Yes.
I got a comment to make. You know, when we're disparaging people, I'm not going to stand up for it, regardless, I have people that I disagree with. It's my time, sir, is the, is council communication done?
It is.
Thank you. You know, the Assessor's Office has a lot of great people, the city of Livonia is fortunate to have a lot of really great staff, and, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to just sit here idly and let someone call people out names like that. We're very fortunate, our Assessor's Office does a good job, we're very fortunate that our water department, our police, my list goes on, really great staff, and people take shots at people, and I'm not going to stand up for it, I just disagree with that. So thank you to Livonia employees that do a good job, you know, everyone's got a job to do, and it's not easy, some people have to go on TV before people, and that's not easy to do for some people that aren't necessarily TV personalities or have great hair like me. So I do appreciate our staff.
Guys, come on, this.
And thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I also wanted to mention that the information that Mr. Martin referred to is in our council packets that's online, so if anybody has any questions regarding when the March Board meetings are, they are in the council packets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further from the audience on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Schele?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the consent agenda passes seven to zero. I'm going to move on to unfinished business. Item number 17 is a rezone petition, this comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to Petition 2024-08-01-04, submitted by Silken Gold, requesting to rezone the property at 37355 Eight Mile Road, located on the southeast corner of Eight Mile Road and Newburgh Road. Public hearing was held on Monday, December 9, 2024. Before, I'm just going to kind of give everybody a quick overview on kind of how our process, so right now, I'm going to go to council for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a denying resolution on item 17.
Do you support?
Support.
Would you like to continue?
The petition, petitioner has not, to me, after the public hearing and just whatever, living in Livonia most of my life, and it's just not harmonious in that area, and that's basically what it boils down to, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So just to let everybody know, we do, how these motions are going to go, we, the motion on the floor right now is a denying. So I'm going to go to council to have an open forum, then I'm going to go to the petitioner, and then I'm going to go to the audience, if that's okay. So if you would like to, you know, make your way up, but right now, this is on the denying on the table, okay? Counsel? Well, no, do we have, council have any, Councilwoman Morgan?
I would like to make a recommendation that we put this in the committee and take a look at this.
So we do have a, we have a substitute motion, do we have support?
This is, this is one of those...
Hang on, one sec. So you have support? So the floor is yours, so we have a substitute motion for committee of a whole, supported by Councilwoman Schele, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so my thoughts on this is, I've talked to many, many residents, I've seen pros, cons, I went over the plans multiple times, I've talked to probably 30 citizens, received probably 200 letters, out of them, probably 25% were for, the rest were against. But the bottom line in my eyes is that what I found from the people who are against it is we don't want it, because we don't want it. There's no legitimate...
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
So...
Guys, I didn't wanna do it. Listen, I understand. We just have to keep, guys, just a professional meeting.
There's three main, there's three main things that people have come up with, because it'll increase the traffic. That's, that is very subjective. It'll increase the crime. I don't believe that's the case. I was a police officer here in the City of Levonia for twenty-five years. Whether your gas station in the south end, east end, you're still gonna get crime. It's there. It's not going to increase the crime anymore than the crime has been there in the past. Now, the environmental runoff situation, these are the three things that everyone brought up. We have the EPA, we have Eagle, we have a lot of different agencies that look at gas stations that are gonna be put in. And so the bottom line to this, in my opinion, is I'm not necessarily against this, but I wanna see more evidence. And I'm more than happy to continue to listen to the residents, and also have a discussion with the rest of council. So the bottom line is, yes, ma'am, I see your letter, and I've read them all, over and over and over again, to the tune of multi, the same letter being sent to me two hundred times. So I get it. I understand where a lot of the citizens are and where the stance is. But, you know, I mean, this, this is not bad for the City of Levonia. People think it's a bad thing, but people thought the Speedway going up at Seven Mile, Newburg was a bad thing, and it's not a bad thing. Everybody says that there's eighteen gas stations within a two-mile radius. Well, you go out to M5 and Grand River, of course, there's gonna be more gas stations. But that's not the City of Levonia. We don't have that type of, those type of gas stations. So we're focusing on the City of Levonia here, not what goes on in Farmington Hills. So that is why I'm recommending that council takes a look at this a little bit more thoroughly and puts it into committee. So...
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Do we have any other council communications on the committee of the whole substitute motion? Seeing none. What I'm gonna do is go to the petitioner. So right now, we had an original denying. Now a substitute motion will have to be voted on, and if that goes through, then that takes its place. If it doesn't, if it gets denied, then we go back to the original motion. So with that being said, I'm gonna go to the petitioner. Now that council is good. And then I'm gonna go to the audience before votes. Is that okay? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Evening, everyone. My name's Alex Sewicki from Sheets. You could find me at thirty-nine three hundred West Twelve Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. Thank you for everyone, thank you everyone for having me this evening. We're gonna do this old school, and I have a presentation down here instead of up on the screens, but that is okay. So I wanna talk about some of the questions we heard at the last meeting, the last public meeting of the city council that had our proposal on it, to hopefully get ahead of some of the questions you might ask this evening, and some of the questions that citizens might bring up this evening, and maybe some...
Can we get the, I'm sorry to interrupt, can we get the presentation on the screen for the residents? Is that easy?
I think TV.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Does everybody, can everybody see that?
Now it is.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Termina.
Sorry. Okay. So if you move to the next couple of slides for me. So I wanted to take a second to remind you about what we're doing. So we're requesting a rezone from C1 local business to C2 general business for a six thousand one hundred thirty-nine square foot restaurant, convenience store, and gas station, the southeast corner of Eight Mile and Newburg Roads. So we are proposing a one point eight three developed acre site with six fuel pumps and twelve stations, and it's gonna have that convenience drive-through. And on the next slide, you can see a little bit about what it's gonna look like. So we're proposing an awesome-looking building, lots of glazing, full-section brick and stone, and architectural metals. On the next slide, you can see the current site plan we're proposing. A little small on that screen, but I do have some renderings on the next slide. So these are computer-generated images of what the site could look like. I have three of them here And I also have a picture of our interior seating. So moving into the next part of the presentation here, I wanted to talk about those questions that I was referencing earlier. So firstly, what makes Sheets different? What is a Sheets? So Sheets was founded in nineteen fifty-two in Altoona, Pennsylvania, by Bob Sheets. Over seventy years, and nearly eight hundred locations later, we are a leading regional restaurant, convenience retailer, who is still wholly owned and operated by the Sheets family. There's no franchises here. They're all privately owned and operated by the Sheets family. And as you can see on the next slide on our family tree, there are fifteen members of the Sheets family who work in the business every day in various roles and levels, including the one leading the charge on our land development here in Michigan. The in-depth family involvement helps us stay true to our values, and it helps us put forward an offer that is really unmatched here in southeast Michigan. So to answer that question, really, about why are we different, it is really about that offer. So again, we're a leading regional restaurant, convenience retailer, not a gas station. Sheets is a unique brand that'll offer the community a new experience. A new experience that includes robust grocery items and a convenience offering. An award-winning made-to-order food program with full kitchens boasts one point eight million different combinations of food that you can get out of our kitchens, fully customizable. And that same level of customization, you can get through the Sheets Brothers Coffee Bar. So you can get coffee, espresso, milkshakes, smoothies, all sorts of things like that. On the next slide, you're gonna be able to see inside our stores, and I showed you a photo earlier, but you can eat inside of our stores and our restaurants. You can also enjoy our clean restrooms. Those touchscreen order points in the middle slide there are how you order in our restaurant. You can get those one point eight million combinations. It's a really seamless ordering experience. And we also take that innovative technology outside, and that's how you order through our drive-through. When you pull up to our drive-through, you're not talking to a person. You actually roll down your window and touch on the screen exactly, exactly what you wanna order. On the next slide, you'll see that we have an extension of our interior seating. We have it outdoors as well. And that's complemented by our beautiful architectural, again, full-section brick and stone on all fours, all four sides of our building. You know, our brand is really designed around giving our customers exactly what they want, when they want it, and how they want it. Next question is about whether we're a truck stop. And the answer is absolutely no. We are not proposing a truck stop here in Levonia. This location is envisioned to be a convenient community store, providing essential services to Levonia residents. It's a quick and easy place to pick up snacks and beverages, get your made-to-order food, sit and eat, use our restrooms, and fuel up. Each of our locations is created using detailed conversations with folks like you, your staffs, and people within the community, to make sure that the sites are designed to fit where they are. Truck stop would not fit here, and that's not what we're proposing. Less than seven percent of all of our locations are what we would call a truck stop, less than seven percent. Those facilities have high-flow diesel, they're selling diesel exhaust fluid in bulk, and they have plenty of maneuvering space for these big tractor-trailers. We're not proposing any of that here in Levonia. So the next question is, what's the benefit that you're gonna have for our community? So we have a lot that we're gonna be able to offer here. We have our made-to-share program, which donates food weekly out of each one of our locations, including potentially in Levonia. In two thousand four alone, that equated to over fifty million meals, donating fifty million meals over in two thousand twenty-four. We also sponsor Special Olympics at every level, state, national, local. And then during the holidays, we have our Sheets for the Kids charity. So during the holidays, each store, including potentially in Levonia, donates and buys presents for sixteen local children to make their season just a little bit brighter. We also support Make-A-Wish, and we make donations from every store. So last year, we exceeded over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in donations just out of the Sheets for the Kids charity. And then, of course, you can't forget, we also donate to local schools and organizations and stuff like that. That's also a big, important thing. Donate to the sports team, or the Drama Guild, or whatever we need to support. We also have a lot of economic benefits. So this is gonna cost ten million dollars in construction costs, much of which is used by local contractors. All of the work is spent, all of the engineering work is spent using local firms. You'll have increased tax assessments on this property, which over the next decade could total nearly a million dollars. We're gonna have thirty to thirty-five local full-time jobs, if an employee's availability allows, with excellent pay. The average hourly pay of an employee for those that are hourly is about nineteen fifty an hour, and that's in Michigan, with the minimum being seventeen, so way above minimum wage. Those jobs also lead to a variety of careers within Sheets if someone chooses. There are over seven hundred and fifty different career titles in Sheets. And I've lived that. I've started at the bottom and moved all the way to where I am. Some of those, a lot of those, pay really, really well. Actually, all of them pay really, really well. In the store, you can have assistant managers making, on average, eighty-two thousand dollars a year, and store managers making a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year, on average. On top of all of that, we have great benefits. They are top-of-the-line: medical, dental, vision, paid time off, parental leave, employee assistance programs, and then more financial benefits, like 401K, quarterly bonuses, tuition reimbursement, and more. And we can back that up on the next slide by our award-winning culture. So over the past decade, Sheets has been recognized by Fortune as one of the top one hundred workplaces in the entire country. They also, this past year, we are the second-best retailer in the entire country, second-best retailer, entire country to work for. We're very proud of that. So next question is, let's talk about safety. So safety is our highest priority. We wouldn't be a great place to work for all these employees if it were unsafe. People have trusted Sheets, our dedicated safety teams, and our effective policies and procedures for over seventy years now. Folks use our parking lots as places to make online marketplace transactions and custody transfers between parents. You can Google crime at any retailer XYZ, and you're gonna come up with search results. It happens. Crime happens where crime happens. Sheets has not attract crime. In fact, we often deter it, because people tend to figure out you can't get away with crime at Sheets. Next question is about lighting. First and foremost, Sheets always meets or exceeds municipal ordinances when they are required. And frankly, there's not a whole lot more to say about that. We are required to follow your ordinance, which includes making sure a light will not spill past our property line. I know that was a big concern. We are required to follow your ordinance. That also means we have to strike a really hard balance between creating a safe, well-lit environment, and also making sure that we're meeting the needs of our neighbors. The next question that we hear a lot, and heard a lot at the past meeting, is the potential for our future competitors and how this might affect them. So however, most of these concerns revolve around gas station to gas station, which is who we argue we are really not. We are a restaurant and convenience store first, just like we started seventy-plus years ago, and we have a unique brand with a unique offer that is not seen in Levonia or anywhere in southeast Michigan, except for our Sheets and Romulus. We have entered new markets over the past seventy years, and it's been our experience that others do not go out of business. What we have seen is that competition creates a drive for innovation and investment among those in convenience and gas station, gas station industry. We've already seen evidence of that here in Michigan. We've seen evidence of competitors investing and modernizing in their facilities where we have opened or announced stores in the metro area. We believe competition is good for southeast Michigan. When new businesses come to an area, competition drives innovation, enhances customer choice, lowers prices, and fosters economic growth. And then the final question that is brought up is about other communities pushing back on our proposal. We'll undoubtedly hear about, hear about that this evening. We strive to be the very best neighbor that we can be, and it's evident in every project we do, including this one. We've modified our site plans to alleviate some neighbor concerns, which is direct evidence of this. When you're building fifty, sixty locations, you know, some pushback is to be expected. But we also wanna say, most communities are very happy about our coming here. Of the communities we have applied and have been turned down in the past year, the list stands at only one that has turned us down. Thirteen have said yes. So final thoughts.
Everybody, just please remember.
Some final thoughts. So the corner has been commercial for decades, including a twenty-four-hour operation, and per the planning commission and staff, it is supposed to be master-planned, commercial, consistent with its long history. It's currently vacant and deteriorating, and the soils under the building are giving way. With a construction cost of ten million, one point five of which is going to be needed to remediate those soils, very few companies are gonna be able to afford to develop this corner. Naturally, our competition doesn't want us here, and they've created an organized effort against us, which is reasonable. What is not reasonable is a lot of the concerns that they will probably bring up, and that I have addressed this evening, are not also being applied to their locations. But those problems don't seem to be happening there. You don't seem to have a problem with crime and light and other things, for example, with the Speedway at Seven Mile. The closest Levonia resident to our location, Levonia resident, is two thousand feet. Some twenty-four-hour gas stations in Levonia are as close to two hundred feet to their closest Levonia resident. With that, again, I am requesting a rezone from C1 local business to C2 general business, and I thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, so I'm gonna go back to council if they have direct questions to the petitioner, and then I'll go to the audience. Counsel, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Councilman Morgan?
Yes, sir. Could you tell us what type of security procedures that you have in place there?
Sure. So our stores host a variety of security policies and procedures and systems. Back in central Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, excuse me, we have a security operations center. We call it the SOC, S-O-C, that monitors our stores, all of our stores, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, through an array of cameras that catch every angle of the site. We also have dedicated security teams in every one of our districts that make sure stores have the support that they need, and if they need additional support, we make sure to get that, on top of making sure that we have good relationships with our local law enforcement. And then also, all of our employees are highly trained to spot out any potentials for crime, or any type of emergency that might be occurring, and to appropriately respond to them.
Okay. Secondly, as far as the plot plan, I've looked at it many, many times, over and over. Is there any way that you could see a tractor-trailer pulling in there and making a reasonable turn inside that location, or even parking, or any place that a semi-truck or could get in there and stay, or park, for that matter?
No. We run truck turns on all of our sites to make sure that our tractor-trailer can deliver fuel or deliver fuel to our store. And this site is actually operationally challenging for us. And also, there is absolutely no space for one to park for a long period of time, and we would not allow it, as it would jam up the entire site for the rest of our customers.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, and before I go to anybody else, I just, let me just make a quick, just a general overview. This, this request that's in front of us is just for zoning, right? This is the C1 to C2 that's on the table. The site plan, kind of how the process works that we've been doing is, is we wouldn't approve the site plan until, or the zoning, until we had a site plan in front of us. So historically, that's kind of how it goes. So a lot of things, when we're sitting there talking about, you know, lighting and all that, that would usually come in the plan review. So just to, just to stay on point, this is about the zoning request. Councilman Toy?
Thank you. Sir, so that means you won't have like a body, like a security person on the site at any time, right? Because you're twenty-four-seven operation, correct?
We are twenty-four-seven hours. If the situation arises where we would need that, we absolutely can provide that. But generally, it's not needed.
Okay. Because I'd like to see that. I don't know how we monitor that, you know, in that regard, because I don't wanna, you know, that's, that's the far corner, or one of the far corners, if you will, of our community. And our police, you know, we only have a limited amount of police in our, in our areas, I know you can imagine. And neighbors are close to you. In my way of thinking, they drive that way. They drive on Newburg, they drive on Hagerty, they drive on Eight Mile. I mean, I go down that way a lot. So... So, it's not that there may not be a house right there, sir, but they use those facilities, and they're familiar with those areas. So, you know, in all due respect, sir, you know, people are there. And, Mr. Chair, I don't want to be insulting to you or my colleagues, but it used to be a voting meeting, we're voting. It's not a study meeting or a committee of the whole. And that's what I feel we just were through, because the same kind of information was given out, quite frankly, at the public hearing. And I appreciate your presentation, sir, but in all due respect, I really didn't learn anything new about it. And, you know, and I'm not trying to be insulting, I'm just trying to be fair, because if there was something else, this is the opportunity maybe now, since the chair has opened it up a little bit wider than just voting on it tonight. So, you know, I'd be all ears to hear anything new you want to share with us, because, you know, I mean, you run a nice establishment. I just don't think it's in harmony of those areas, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any specific questions that you would like me to investigate for you?
No, sir, I don't. The one I had was on security. I'm very concerned about that, especially in a twenty-four-hour operation.
Sure.
Such as a gas station, you're serving food, that brings to light other factors that are going to be there as well, you know, of folks and things like that. And, you know, I just, I don't know. When I first saw this, no offense, I didn't feel good about it. My gut told me I just didn't feel right about it.
So, we do have our one location in the city of Romulus. If you feel necessary, I would encourage you to call Romulus Police if you haven't done so already, and I'm very confident they will tell you there has been no problems at Sheets.
That's super. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. To Councilman Toy's point, this is a voting meeting, so I'm okay. I have a colleague that has referred this item to the committee of the whole, because he has further questions. That is resolution C. I'll be in support of that if a council member has further questions and wants to dive deeper into the project. Gives petitioner the chance to talk more about their project, it gives the residents time to kind of understand the project and bring up more questions. So, I'll be supportive of my colleague in that motion and, you know, look forward to seeing where it goes. Thank you.
Anything else from council for the petitioner? Anything for the good of the order before I go to the audience? All right, back to the petitioner. Do you have anything further?
Nope, not unless anybody has any questions.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I'm going to open it up, and it is two minutes on an item on the agenda. I thought it was three. It's two. I know. I know. I know. Listen.
It's council rules.
It is council rules. But, listen, if you have something, just feed it back, but we're going to do the two. I know. I know. Just work with us.
To the Council President, it's been the same rules for years.
It has. I always thought that it was. So, I do apologize. Listen, we're going to make sure.
I came prepared for three minutes.
So, get that.
And I can't shorten it to two.
I would say that if you could, hand it off like you did the last time, if it's possible, Mr. Lynn.
Well, my wife has two and a half minutes herself.
Mr. President, can I, to the President's point, he doesn't make the rules. This is the council rules that have been set for many, many years. So, I appreciate that you want to talk more. I talk a lot. I love talking, trust me. But with that being said, there is a meeting, we have to follow proper procedures. The President, he's not the king, he doesn't make the rules, so.
Mr. Lynnley, it is two.
Why weren't we notified beforehand?
It's always been two.
Mr. Lynnley, if you could, why don't you read what you have, and I know that's inconvenient, and then submit it to our clerk, and she will get us the rest of your, or, you know, all your papers, sir. Yes. Sorry about all that, but.
I know. Sorry.
Yeah.
Does my time start after my introduction?
Yeah, I could do.
Okay. My name's Willard Lindley. I'm at 20218 Edgewood, here in Livonia for twenty-three years. The proposal, I'd like to start by quoting one of our city council members when he spoke about another proposed development, the Staybridge Hotel on I-275. Mr. Donavick, you made the perfect argument against the Sheets rezoning. You stated the Staybridge suite is completely surrounded by commercial businesses, residential is nowhere near it. You then went on to say, the city ideally wants this next to a major freeway slash commercialized sector and not along residential road-type roadways. This is the perfect location, and that was for the Staybridge Hotel. That's the exact flip of the situation with a former Rite Aid drugstore, which is completely surrounded by residential, recreational, and a single C1 daycare, all on residential streets. It simply isn't appropriate for a business that belongs along a major freeway or in a commercialized sector to be so close to our homes, recreation, and even a daycare. From the standpoint of land use planning, I'd like to ask you as city council members, why, at page nineteen of the Vision Twenty-One Plan, is it okay for the city to say automotive-oriented uses such as gas stations, auto repair, and drive-throughs are not permitted in the proposed city center area? While some may say it's okay to place the same class of business in the middle of existing residential or recreational areas, that's simply wrong for the same reasons. Regarding blight, you don't see any blight in Livonia because it does its job. Public safety, should the occupancy permit be pulled by the city as the existing building now is a structural problem as a result of poor subsoils? Permitting was not proper to begin with.
Mr. Lynnley, that's time. If you want to give us the rest of it, we will add it as new data, for sure. We'd be happy to.
May I state my conclusion?
You can't. I'm sorry. It's just our Roberts Rules of Order. We get the two minutes. If you'd like to have someone behind you finish it, we can do that.
Okay.
You put Mrs. in the last time. She did good. Hi, Mr. -- hi, Mrs. Lynnley. How are you?
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to go to, yes, you, and then I'll go back that way.
And if I may, before you start the clock, if you have a timer, I don't think you need to tell people thirty seconds, just let the timer go off.
We can do that.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is P.G. I'm not impressed with the fact that Sheets came and opened up their corporate headquarters at Twelve Mile and Hagerty Road. It is a truck stop. Councilwoman Scott Morgan, before you say that people just don't want it because they don't want it, they're looking at the close proximity of a twenty-four-hour truck stop that sells beer, wine, and liquor in a community. I can walk to this particular Sheets location. I didn't get a notification to say that they wanted to open up a Sheets gas station there or truck stop. I can walk there. I don't want it in my community. I don't want it near the children. I think the density is too much. Sheets has a mentality like Walmart used to have before we shut them down in a couple of locations. We'll go and open up a big monstrosity, and we'll put the small, mind-pa businesses that are gas stations out of business, and that's not the right mindset. I appreciate what you said, Councilwoman Carey, when you said that you're going to have a forum and you're inviting all the candidates. I'm going to say to all of you Livonia residents here, anybody that votes for this Sheets gas station, you should vote them out. You should vote them out.
Ma'am, ma'am.
You have to pay attention to what the residents are saying.
Thirty seconds.
This is not councils, I thought you weren't going to say anything.
That's my power limit. Hey.
So, now you got to give me an extra ten seconds because you said thirty seconds, and I'm waiting for the bell.
The ten seconds will be.
Thank you. You said that this is the people's podium. This is not the elected official's podium. This is the people's podium. They don't want the gas station because it doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. And that's what I want to say, and if you're against, I got ten seconds. If you're against Sheets.
I will give it. Just stay like that.
All of these hands are against Sheets. This is the people's podium. Say no to the rezoning.
Thank you. So, I, right now, listen, listen, guys, 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 guys. Listen. All right. Hey, 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 hey. Listen. Hey, hey, hey.
You don't live in Livonia.
Guys, we have to keep this professional.
Yeah.
So, here's the deal, just given some rule. Ma'am, ma'am.
Great. How can I?
Ma'am. Listen.
They, okay.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Hey, just as it's the people.
Sorry, man.
Mr. King, just, just, ma'am.
I just hate people coming to my community and telling me what to do.
Mr. King, guys, listen, I know everybody wants to talk. Seriously, listen, everybody is going to have a chance to talk at the people's podium. Listen, Mr. King, Mr. King, just do me a favor. Everybody, let's keep ordering this meeting, please. I know there's a lot of emotions here, and everybody is going to get their two minutes to speak, and we're not going to do a thirty-second interruption. It's going to, once you hear that sound, your time is up, okay? I'm going to go to Mr. King. The floor is yours. Name and address for the record and for the, wait, 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 wait.
She goes next, sorry.
Mr. President, may I just speak and say that our parliamentarian does his job, and he takes it very seriously, and he gives a thirty-minute warning, and we do this at all, thirty seconds, sorry, at all of our meetings, and he does it as a courtesy to let people know when, if they have something prepared that is longer than two minutes, if there's a point at the bottom that they want to get to, that they know, okay, I'm not going to say this part, I'm going to focus on this. I think it is a respectful thing that our parliamentarian does that to people, and I think it should be his decision as parliamentarian whether or not to continue that, but that is just.
Yeah, I agree. And here's the thing, listen, guys, we have to let everybody talk, and that's just exactly what you said, it's the people's podium. Everybody's going to get three minutes, and for this, I'm going, or two minutes. Two minutes, two minutes, two minutes. I'm going to ask our parliamentarian to suspend the thirty-second countdown for this meeting. Once you hear it, the time is up. Is that fair? Okay. Good evening. Name and address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Lynnley, and I live on 20218 Edgewood in Livonia. We've been living here in Livonia for over twenty years. I have a few topics that I'd like to reiterate this evening. First, the rezoning issue. The rezoning from C1 local business to C2 with a variance, which wasn't, hasn't been mentioned yet today, to highway commercial is not what is intended by both the zoning ordinance and the city's land use plan. This is simply too extreme. Couple this with the eventual crime that comes with every twenty-four-seven operation, this will only hurt the nearby homes. This is why industrial land is neither typically nor ideally located near residential land uses. It is also why highway commercial is not located near residential land uses. Mr. Morgan, as a former police officer, does the additional crime brought on by a twenty-four-seven operation in the middle of a residential area concern you? The Sheets General Counsel, Gary Zimmerman, admitted on the record that its locations have a crime problem: shootings, carjackings, assaults, robberies, and shoplifting. It has even been sued by the federal government over discrimination. Concerns over blight have also been raised by some. As long as the city of Livonia continues to do its job policing commercial properties within the city, blight will never be the issue. Finally, you as members of the city council were elected by us, the citizens of Livonia, to listen to and address our concerns regarding city governance. We voted for you to represent us, listen to our concern, and speak for us. This is especially true in important matters such as this rezoning application comes before all of you. We voted for you because we believed you would represent the views of your constituents, not the views of outside developers and the minority of Livonia residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. I have been here in the city as a resident longer than Bates, okay? I was here before Bates, I was here before the hospital, so I'm very, very vested in this community. Observation, there are many people here who have never even been to a council meeting, and they're going to come up and speak tonight. There's many, many people here who don't even live in Livonia. I went to the grand opening of the Sheets in Romulus. I didn't see any of you there, even though you knew a Sheets was coming to Livonia. There was over five hundred people there. They loved it. Romulus loved it. Okay? What breaks my heart about Livonia? Every corner's empty, empty building after empty building after empty building. I have used Sheets. As a bandleader, I travel across the country, and I can't wait to get to one because I know I can get a good meal late at night. I work nights. This is, there's something called "not in my backyard," NIMBYs. NIMBYs. How has anything ever been built in Livonia with all the NIMBYs? We have the same issue at Seven and Farmington, and to some of these people, they would have loved to keep it blank another ten years. Have some guts, have some courage to bring a family-owned business, one that really cares and gives back to the community. Laura, go to the Sheets in Romulus. Go to.
I have been there.
Okay.
Floor still his.
I did not see you there at the grand opening.
Guys, hey, 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 hey. Floor is still his.
Okay. So, all I have to say is, let's bring good businesses, family-owned businesses into Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
God bless you.
The floor is yours. Name and address, you have two minutes.
Kevin Bank, 43275 Daniel. I want to kind of go on top of those comments. I've been to the Sheets in Romulus. It's very well-lit, it's very nice, great food, I think there's like a hundred and fifty varieties of how to make a hot dog, and the coffee's cheaper and better than Starbucks. If you get off the Newburgh exit and go north from ninety-six, this would be the first gas station to the east. You can go to the one at Seven Mile in Newburgh, take a left, and then take another left to go north, which is a nightmare, and most people probably just don't do it. One of the comments that I hear through the signs and things outside is crime. Let me tell you, first of all, there's one store that they cite in South Carolina six years ago that was already in a high-crime area. I don't know how this location could have more crime than the Rite Aid that was there before. I went in that store many times and collapsed around there without even seeing someone. I could have taken everything out, but I don't do that. Other peoples, I'm sure, did, and this is at three o'clock in the afternoon, not at three in the morning, when it was twenty-four hours. So, it can't have possibly more crime. I also hear that there's going to be spillage, and if it spills, they're going to abandon it, and it's not going to be there anymore, or that it's going to contaminate the area. This is a multi-billion-dollar corporation that's going to be signing the guarantee for that. Michigan state law requires any underground storage tank to be removed within one year of its last use. Now, if you look at a comparison between a dollar store and Sheets, which this is probably, frankly, what's going to go into it, it's the dilapidated building, soil sinking, what else but a dollar store? I think Sheets would be a big asset to the community. You say it has, it is a family-owned business. I had seven hundred and fifty locations, I think you said over eight hundred. The competition is Speedway, which is owned by Seven-Eleven, which has eighty-five thousand locations, meaning for every one Sheets, there's a hundred and thirty-nine Subways. Let's give them a chance and see how they are.
That's time. Thank you, sir. Good evening. Name and address, and you have two minutes.
I prefer that thirty-second warning, if you want to give it to me.
No, we're not, we're not, I can't make it. We're just going to just.
All right. My name is Marcia Avandrov, and I live at 30556 Puritan, Livonia. I've been here for fifty-two years. I moved here when I was four. So, anyways, it was all farm country, and I would dearly love to have the Sheets go in there. It's a family-friendly and family-owned, and it's amazing company. They keep everything neat and clean. It's not like any other gas station. It's, sometimes they're not even their operational, the other gas stations, and they certainly need a lot to be desired as far as cleanliness. The Sheets keeps things family-friendly, you know, cleanly, and I love the fact that they invest in our youth, and they give scholarships for our young people, they help with, like you said, the sponsoring the Special Olympics and Make-A-Wish Foundation. They're going to be investing ten million or more in our community, and it's all going to be one beautiful complex, a restaurant, and I do work at night sometimes, and I would one beautiful complex, a restaurant, and I do work at night sometimes and I would like to go to a safe gas station when I'm out of gas. I don't, I pass by several of them because they're, they don't look good, but this one would be open 24/7 and I feel very comfortable going there. So I just wanted to say how nice, they really, they really care about their property. This is the fact that it's family-friendly and family-owned and let's, and I just wanted to add that, I forgot what I'm gonna add, 30, oh, I like the fact that they're gonna be adding 30 to 35, well, good-paying jobs in the Livonia area and also that they have a career path that people can follow, up to 82,000 a year. That's fantastic. And for this company to be the top 100 workplaces in the country...
That's time, ma'am, thank you.
That's a real winner.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, good evening. The floor is yours, name, address, and you got two minutes.
Good evening, Marcia McLean, 20075 Edgewood Avenue. I've heard that the city should welcome rezoning and development in this area to prevent this corner from blight. Well, you know Livonia does not have blight because the city has a commission that requires regulations and commercial property standards that owners maintain their buildings and their property regardless if they are occupied by business or empty. So as long as the city does their job of policing commercial properties, we're not gonna have a blight problem there. Now, it's been seven years since Kmart closed, it's been five years since I think Sears finally closed, and one year since the Rite Aid closed. There's been no blight, an empty building doesn't mean blight. And according to this corner, I think we can afford to take a minute and to see if a local business, which is under this corner, the zoning, to become a new tenant there. But getting back, more importantly, I think you need to be concerned about the crime problems that do follow the Sheets business. And I will, a year ago this month, Gary Zimmerman, the General Counsel of Sheets, wrote in a letter to U.S. Congressman Roger Williams, the Chairman of the House of the Small Business Committee in Washington, D.C., admitting, admitting that they have, the Sheetz stores have major problems with shoplifting, armed robbery, vehicle theft, and violent crime. Now, Ms. Toy at the last meeting asked the Sheets representative, who, who will be the security, our police or your business? And he said, "Well, Sheets goes into low-crime areas, so that isn't a problem."
That's time, ma'am, thank you.
The decision...
Ma'am, that's time, I'm sorry.
To welcome the crime to this area will be your legacy.
You've already spoke.
I just want to correct the record.
I can't, ma'am, I can't.
I've moved here since 1952.
Ma'am, I can't, I can't, you've already spoke.
Okay, I said I've been here 52 years, but since 1952, I'm 76.
All right, thank you. Ma'am? Name and address, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Christina Roconis, I live at 18959 Deering Street in Livonia. I visited a Sheets yesterday, actually, and I have to say it's probably one of the nicest gas stations I have ever been to. It's like an upscale gas station and the one thing I thought about is when I was in college at Schoolcraft and how we could have really used a place like that to go study. It's open all night, there's coffee, I mean, it would have been so much safer than walking out in a very dim parking lot at night and them closing the doors on us and basically saying, you know, "Sorry, you can't study here anymore, you just, you gotta go." And I think this would be extremely beneficial to the community and I think it's bringing revenue into the community and I think that's kind of really big priority we need to think Especially when everybody keeps mentioning all these empty buildings, that's really not good look for Livonia right now. And honestly, that is really all I have to say, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out. Good evening. Name and address, you got two minutes.
My name is Sandra Moore. My husband and I have lived at 20185 Ellen over 25 years in the Deer Creek subdivision. Just a note, we moved to that part of Livonia and not Romulus for particular reasons. Our Livonia residential communities closest to the Eight Mile and Newburgh corner, which would be Willow Woods subdivision, Gulf Ridge Villas subdivision, and our Deer Creek subdivision, make up a total of almost 400 homes, paying several million dollars in annual property taxes to the city of Livonia, and we represent well over 1,000 voters. Our homeowners association and our residents have worked hard over the years to maintain our properties and we've seen the values of our homes increase. Being situated near this panoramic corner of the city, bordering the Fox Creek and the Whispering Willows Golf Courses and Greenmead Historical Park, together with the city maintaining the surrounding environments including parks, has helped increase our valuations by the city as well. It's vital that the city continue to do its part to sub, to sustain this mutually beneficial relationship. The residents that were petitioned were overwhelmingly, over 95%, against the rezoning of this property to C-plus, or excuse me, to C2 plus the waiver. Considering our neighbors to the north, the Farmington Hills side of Eight Mile near this intersection is all residential, it's only right the city consider the safety and concerns of those nearby residents as well. We are all neighbors and we need to work together for our mutual benefit and enjoyment of a safe and beautiful neighborhood. No doubt, every council member wants the same for their neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record and you got two minutes.
My name is Sharkey Haddad and I'm with the Caldean American Chamber of Commerce, representing over 1,000 small business owners, some of them are sitting here tonight. I want to address my first concerns to the individuals who decided that crimes, or Sheets is not a magnet to crime, starting with a former police officer who seems that he made up his mind about which way to go by kicking the can down the road and not voting on it tonight. And with the others, individuals who consider Sheets as a good thing because they went to the grand opening and got free hot dogs. If I knew that, I would be offering free hot dogs as well to the opposition side. But let me just reiterate what was said before earlier, and especially to the former police officer who sworn to protect and serve. On January 18, 2024, just last year, last year exactly, Congress Committee on Small Business Hearings held a, a, a hearing and a representative from Sheets says the following, and I quote, "Sheets is troubled by the increase in violence crime across the nation." So yes, Sheets is experiencing crime, sir. And then they followed that by saying, specifically, experience, and we have experienced the impact of the nation's rise in crimes significantly different from other retailers because of our 24/7 operation pause unique challenges. So I went and Googled crimes at Sheets, end up with 10 pages. I'm gonna go through just two pages, especially for those who thinks Sheets is not a magnet to crime. Just yesterday, yesterday, one person seriously hurt in shootings at Sheets Greensboro, North Carolina, January 26, 25. Two juvenile males stole bottles of alcohol at Sheets Shippensburg, Pennsylvania, January 25, 25. Fatal Christmas Eve shooting on Sheetz parking lot in Manchester, Pennsylvania, December 24, 24.
That's time, thank you very much for your time.
I would like to give this report to the council members.
You can hand it right here to our city engineer and we'll get it over to him.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, name and address for the record.
Hi, James Crowley, 16106 Blue Skies Drive, Livonia. And I have been to several meetings, I'm sure the council recognizes me. And anyway, so I do take offense to that a bit, but, you know, I just want to say, I just think that Sheets, it is a great place, but it's not the right place at Eight Mile and Hagerty. We have Myers gas station with a full service, you name it, Myers has it. Two miles down, you've got Speedway, a mile the other way. I mean, at what point do we keep saying the next, you know, the next best thing? So now Sheets is the next best thing, so we're gonna kind of, you know, abandon everyone else and jump to Sheets? And the biggest problem that I have is, I brought this up when we, when it came up at Five Mile in Newburgh, the proposal, I see trucks parked overnight, not with the tractor and trailer, just the tractor. They pull it and they sleep. I've called the police time and time again and we, what we've discovered is they're allowed to park there here in Livonia. There's designated places at Wonderland, they park at the, Planet Fitness at Five in Newburgh, I see them pull in when I leave. I've got an aging mother that I spend the evenings with and I go home sometimes 10, 11, 12 at night and they're parked there. Not one, not two, sometimes several. This is going to attract more and more of that. This is our community, okay? And we voted you in for that reason. So let's take note of who's supporting the right decisions for the right place. I am. I'm going to watch who's voting for what and I'm going to spread it to my friends. I've been here, I was born in St. Mary's Hospital, I lived at 15108 Blue Skies, I live at 16108 Blue Skies today. I own six houses in Livonia, I have my life savings invested in the city of Livonia. Let's stop the nonsense and let's stop this rezoning every time a building goes vacant. We're done. Let's think smart and plan because we did not plan for all these places. They keep popping up and we keep shifting, the next best thing, this is not the best thing. And oh, I have been to Sheets because I traveled, my territory was Pennsylvania, so I've been in Sheets before. Sure, they're a great place, this is not the place.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I like the hands, guys, that's great. Listen, no, you're fine. Name and address for the record, you have two minutes. And then, guys, just one of the other things, just point your comments towards me, just so we can keep a little bit of professionalism.
Good evening, Ali Barrow, attorney Ali Barrow with the Barrow Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the MENA Organization, Middle Eastern, North African Chamber of Commerce, on behalf of several small businesses and local residents within Livonia. I don't want to regurgitate what the panel has over, overtime, traffic, crime, and I'm sure everyone's expressed these thoughts, but there's some discrepancies on what's being presented today. One, this is not a small family business. It's a $7.5 billion corporation where if you have an issue, you have to call a 1-800 number, whereas in, you know, you have Tony's Diner down the street where you can talk to Tony himself, or you have Westbourne Market where you can go see Barbara and get your groceries and she'll ask you, "How was your day?" You have a difference between these mom-and-pop shops that are the backbone of Livonia that have continued to help this community grow and as you can see, everyone here is in opposition to this major conglomerate that's coming in to open in your city, which there is a clear opposition as indicated just by the people in the general audience who have supported the several comments opposing this. Without getting further into depth, there are several financial disadvantages that are proposed by Sheets. For example, misleading pricing strategies which undercut small businesses, misleading gas prices when in reality they're serving an ethanol 88 gasoline, which is far worse than your typical 87, just because it's cheaper doesn't make it's better and just because the building is nice doesn't mean it's good. And that's, that's what we're hearing frequently. The one in Romulus is located outside of an airport, no residential, that's fine, that's where Sheets belongs, where there's no residential impact. There are several concerns that, by the people in this community who have raised these concerns, when Mr. Morgan had said that, "Let's focus on the city of Livonia, focus on the citizens and the residents of this community who are the backbone of the city, who are against the Sheets." So I would leave it at that, I would just ask the members of this council to really listen to the people that put them in these position and take their statements into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Name and address, two minutes, the floor is yours.
My name is Joseph Rosner. My address is 36261 Club Drive, Livonia. You all received emails from me this afternoon. I am a professional civil engineer licensed in the state of Michigan. I have 25 years of experience. The site in its current state does not pose a danger that the city needs to fix. But the potential problems that will result in the construction of the Sheets facility are numerous. I'm not gonna go into all of them, I went into great detail in the email. The adjacent properties were not designed for new runoff from this site. If the soil mitigation is not performed correctly, there will be significant settlement issues even greater than what are currently there, which will cause ruptures in the tanks that could cause pollution. The developers mitigation does not address groundwater contamination and the increased traffic will cause significant wear and tear on the roads, more than what we currently have. Ladies and gentlemen, I do this for a living. I really hope that you vote no on this, it's just not appropriate for the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, name and address, you have two minutes.
Yes, Ralph Orlean, 37182 Breton Drive. I've heard nothing compelling here to support this motion. We've heard "unique experience at a gas station." What, what does that mean? A unique experience at a gas station? Nine or 10 out of 10 people are going to the gas station to get their gas and get to where they gotta go. So don't be fooled by a unique experience. Food choices, really? In the area that we're in, we need additional food choices? You can get anything you want in this area. And as far as crime, of course there's gonna be crime, everybody knows nothing good happens after midnight, right? That's, this is a reality. You're gonna have, you know, crime when you have a store that's open 24 hours, there's cash exchanges, of course there's gonna be additional crime. And I'm just surprised two council members would approve revising a motion without listening to the people or the audience, that to me is a bit surprising. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, two minutes.
Hi, I'm Margaret Camciscus and I reside in Farmington Hills. I am in full support of Sheets. I work as a night shift caregiver for a client in this area. I travel alone between the hours of 10 P, 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Safety is my number one priority. I am very, I am very familiar with Sheets as I have visited other Sheets locations in Ohio and Pennsylvania while traveling to visit family in those states. The facilities we frequented were always very clean, customer service was superb, employees were happy and pleasant. They were proud to work there. I feel it would be beneficial to have a 24-hour convenience facility for night shift workers like myself. There are few options on my route between home and my client in this area that are well-lit, clean, and have healthier food options. I, with made-to-order sandwiches and hot food. I would feel very comfortable utilizing this location as I've had great experiences at the other locations. Please consider approving this rezoning request. Let's get the project started. Jobs and tax revenue depend on your vote. I thank you for your time and I thank you for having an open mind to it.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name, address, two minutes.
Good evening, my name is William Clark, I live on Cardwell Street in Livonia. If I drive three minutes from my house, I'll find a gas station and if I don't like that guy, I can drive another three minutes and find another gas station. So that answers the fundamental question, do we need another gas station? Which is no. The gentleman here, and I have to say, I respect this gentleman, it's very hard going up against a whole room with this sort of adversity. He presented a good case, but ultimately, you know, corporate speak is meaningless. Sheets wants to make money, that's the end, that's, that's the bottom line. He did make it seem like it's the kind of place you want to get married or, you know, or something like, but it's a gas station, it's a gas station and we don't need another gas station. Look, there's a bigger picture here, folks. We can go into crime, we can go into traffic and all, and that is important stuff and the points have been made. I'm only living in Livonia a year, I'm sure you can tell I'm not from here. I'm living in Michigan 10 years now and I love Livonia, great schools, you know, everyone here does a great job, the council, all the volunteer groups, but Livonia has a reputation for being boring, for being sterile, for, for lack in culture. So it has a reputation as the corridor to places where there is those things, Northfield and, and so on. I think that's sad, I really do, and I think like the solution of, well, we'll just throw another gas station up, it's, it's short-sighted and there is a short-sightedness in this community when I talk to my neighbors, "Oh, we have a lot of empty buildings, let's, let's just put a business in there and get the tax and, you know, get someone working." That's all well and good, but what are we actually adding to the community? We're adding nothing. And it's, it's, there's a kind of a joke now within, within the community that it's just endless chicken fast food restaurants and vape stores. If I, you know, if I talk to my family back home and say, "Well, what's it like where you live?" "We have a new gas station, it's, it's the Rolls-Royce of gas stations, but, you know..."
That's time, that's time.
That's what we have, but anyway, folks, we can do better.
I appreciate you, sir. Thank you for coming out. Good evening, sir. Name, address, two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Randy Gustonski, 369965 Mile, Livonia. I'll give you some facts so that maybe you could base your opinions on this. First of all, from the Newcastle News, "Police File Non-Traffic Citation For Disorderly House." Police have been called to the store 72 times so far this year for drunkenness, boisterous conduct, unseemly noise, fighting, and disturbances caused by the people hanging around outside the store. From the EPA, "Sheetz Settles Underground Fuel Tank Violations in Pennsylvania, Virginia..." From the EPA, "Sheets Settles Underground Fuel Tank Violations in Pennsylvania, Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia." Violated regulations designed to prevent fuel leaks from underground storage tanks. They settled with the EPA that Altoona, Pennsylvania-based company will pay $26,000 penalty for violating federal and underground tank regulations. At the two Sheets in Winchester, Pennsylvania, no, Virginia, EPA said Sheets failed to immediately investigate and report suspected leaks in O1 from seven 15,000 gallon tanks. Okay, think about that one. They're right next to a river.
Sir, just point, just talk to me.
Are we done?
Yes, no, yep. You could just direct your comments towards me.
Okay, give me 10 more seconds. I've got a letter here.
You're getting two.
I've got a letter from the VP, General Counsel of Sheets, Gary Zimmer, from congress.gov.
Two seconds. Hey, I get it too.
You're gonna love this one. 10 seconds?
No, no, that's fine, but thank you, sir. Good evening, name and address.
Hi, Bill Schmidt, live in Devenere. Wow, what a great thing. Our front door, front door to our city. You got a bucolic, Greenmead on one side, a golf course, and a gas station. Wow. Seven billion dollar company has come down and decided they're gonna put their new gas station on some sinking land. Couple decades ago, this body, maybe different faces, this body. Y'all decided that, boy, a great big retail business would be great right here, and it's sinking, right? And now you're gonna do the exact same mistake. Exact same mistake. On our front door, next to Greenmead. If I wasn't so angry, I'd be ashamed. This doesn't belong there. Not at all. It's an insult. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, name and address, for the record, you've got two minutes.
Debbie Gustonski, 369965 Mile Road. Food for thought, I've done a lot of Google searching trying to figure this whole thing out too, but I noticed you got, that Sheets is aggressively pursuing the location expansions, but once it's built, I tried to go on their website for their corporate structure to see how they're handling all these businesses that they're building so fast and how they're maintaining them and making sure that things don't happen like they happen. I couldn't find any corporate compliance, I couldn't find any OSHA, health safety, anything of compliance on their structure. There was a little box that said "Health" with seven people. Now I wanna know who's taking care of all these locations and making sure that everything is compliant. I don't want these gas tanks, you know, doing the pollution in Livonia. You can go on, let's see, real quick, if you go onto violationtracker.goodjobsfirst.org, it will show you all the penalties and violations from OSHA, from the EPA, that Sheets has had to deal with. And my other concern is that they are a big company, and who's to say, "I'm not accusing them," but maybe fines don't matter to them because they are a big corporation and they do have a lot of money, so they'll just keep paying them, and nobody's any wiser. So I'd like that to be taken into consideration, and also not having a problem in the past with crime in Livonia. Maybe it's because there wasn't a Sheets around at the time that there wasn't any crime. Romulus's Sheets is next to an airport, not residential.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening.
Name and address, and two minutes.
My name is Johnny Leifert, 4875 Stoneridge Drive. I'm the building owner at the Rite Aid, and whoever said the building is sinking is out of their mind. That's ridiculous. The building is not sinking. The building is a large building, 30,000 square feet, and it's oversized. A typical Rite Aid store is 10,000 feet. We did what we could to save them, but when Rite Aid told us we're closing every store in Michigan, there wasn't anything we could do. And 250 feet behind us is a restaurant and a bar that serves beer, wine, and hard liquor by the glass directly across the street from the park, the Greenmead. How is a gas station with a 25-person food court on 8 Mile gonna affect Greenmead? When you have a festival at Greenmead, I can't even go, you have porta-johns. A person in a wheelchair, handicap, go. My mom's 91, she can't go. At least the Sheets will be there, you have large restrooms, four stalls in each, hand sinks, facilities for people, that's what you need, if not, build a pavilion at Greenmead and restrooms there, because it's very difficult. And the opposition we got is from the Gas Station Owners Association. They're the ones that have funded the opposition, they wound up the people like a toy mouse and they're letting them run. The opposition's coming from Farmington Hills, not from Livonia. I don't understand.
Hang on, hang on.
Yeah, it's true. They created falsehoods, they hired high-priced law firms to represent them, they came to the planning committee hearing their lawyer to discuss Sheets. She came up with 100 violations, the restaurant was open for two weeks. How is that possible? What'd they do, 50 things wrong each day?
Sir, that's time, thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody, if I may, really quick, I know everybody, like I said, there's a lot of emotion here. I laugh because I'm usually on the other side of this and hockey with refs, and I feel like I'm caught in the middle. That's not to mean a joke, just let everybody speak. Everybody is gonna get their time, and it's respectful for all sides, so please, just, you know, be appropriate. That's all I ask, thank you. Ma'am, name and address, and you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Diane Barrett and I'm from northwest Livonia. I do support Sheets. How could you not support a $10 million investment in our city? We should welcome a new business, not turn them away. At a prior meeting, Sheets responded to the concerns, as he did tonight, regarding traffic, lighting, trucks, liquor, safety. He stated they're willing to meet all your demands. They have an extensive surveillance system and partnerships with police departments. Ms. Toy, Speedway doesn't have a human security guard standing at the door, why should Sheets have one? Farmington Hills residents have shared misinformation with the media. The location will not have a truck stop, he reiterated that tonight. They're not gonna sell liquor. The LED lighting is not gonna impact traffic, it's not gonna go beyond the property limits. To the Gas Station Owners Association opposing this project, other than competition, what are you afraid of? Studies prove competition has been economically beneficial for generations. With a lack of logistical reasoning, other than fear of competition, instead of working to oppose Sheets, why not put energy into improving your own businesses? For example, pay your employees better, support the youth, offer tuition reimbursement, give benefits packages. That's what we need to build Livonia. Sheets is not comparable to other gas stations. Why not add a new development that truly is more than a gas station? Stop calling it a gas station, it's also a convenience store. Remember that, be open-minded. And council, you're in the position to approve this rezoning request? Do what is best for our city, don't listen to Livonia or to Farmington Hills, I'm sorry, I'm correcting that. Listen to Livonia, don't listen to Farmington Hills, don't listen to the Gas Association.
Thank you, thank you, that's time.
We need the tax revenue.
Good evening.
Hi there, I'm Sharon Smith, I live at 34558 Pembroke, and I can say that I moved to Livonia because I like the look of it, I like my location. I have two brother-in-laws who live in the southern part of Livonia, and it's very different. Now, I don't have a spacious yard, and I don't live on a lake, but I pay over $6,000 in taxes where I am, and where they live on a lake in Mill Straits, West Bloomfield, they're paying $6,000. Now you guys say that you want the best for Livonia and you wanna keep it high-class, and it be the best. Well, remember, we had class because we chose Livonia. What happened to yours?
Thank you. Ooh, we haven't got, that was a kind of a weird tone in here. Good evening, sir. Name and address, you've got two minutes.
Ralph McNabb, 36372 Fairway Drive. I'm the person that lives 2,000 feet, that this gentleman said, in Livonia, and I'm not even the closest Livonia house to that location, so that data is flawed. What else is flawed is their traffic study, I've read it several times, there's flaws in it, read it, please read it, and I'll come and, I'll sit down with you and show you what's wrong. It's a horrible corner for a gas station. Bottom line, there's three positives, and one of them is, it's clean bathrooms, we've heard that over and over and over, I don't wanna hear it again. There's 13 negatives I've listed, I've given you copies of this, okay? If you refer to a crime map, yeah, that area is the best. In fact, on crime grade, it says that the northwest part of the city is the safest, keep it that way, okay? And then, the city center, won't even allow a gas station, look it up in your Vision 21. Why is that? It's because of those 13 negatives. So why do I want it in my neighborhood? You're gonna throw it down my throat? It's a double standard. Another thing, in this booklet right here, go back and read your statements, four of you on the council had statements in here. I'll paraphrase. "I am committed to representing the interests and needs of residents and working toward a better quality of life for all of us. It is essential that we prioritize sustainable practices to protect our environment for future generations. I envision a Livonia that embraces smart development, that works in harmony with our neighborhoods." You guys wrote this. Maintain the vibrancy of our neighborhoods. Livonia can be the place where people want to work, live, and thrive for generations. I want every resident to know that their voices matter and their participation is crucial to shaping the future of our city. My goal is the best interest of all residents." You know who wrote this?
Thank you, that's time.
Here's your copies.
I appreciate you, sir.
You can read what I just...
Papa, if you could hand it right to our city attorney, he'll get over to us.
Eight copies, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Nick Lamaco, I reside at 20154 Edgewood here in Livonia. Prior to my retirement, I was a planning consultant for over 40 years. I passed out my comments, I hope you have an opportunity to read that. My point in my presentation is that I hope you use accepted planning criteria in your own zoning standards that you have in your zoning ordinance. If you do, the only conclusion that you could reach is to deny this application. The proposed rezoning would support development, which is contrary to your master plan. The commercial zoning designation is inconsistent with the zoning pattern in the vicinity. The proposed rezoning would permit development, which is inconsistent with the established land use pattern. A rezoning should not discourage the use of adjacent lands and buildings or unreasonably affect their value, public testimony said it would. The applicant has not provided any market-based evidence of a changed condition supporting a need for a new fueling station at this location. The applicant has not provided any market-based evidence indicating that existing uses permitted by the current zoning are inappropriate or won't succeed. The proposed 24-hour drive-through restaurant, convenience store, and fueling station is incompatible with the site's existing physical and environmental conditions. Drawings provided by the applicant reveal the proposed use can't be built without additional fill. As such, the site is better equipped to accommodate less intensive development. And lastly, the city's position should be to eliminate spot zoning. Increasing the intensity of the site zoning from C1 to C2 would likely hinder the city's position to eliminate the current spot zoning of this site in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, name and address, two minutes.
20101 Osmus, I live about a quarter mile off of 8 Mile, so I hear all the traffic up on 8 Mile going and coming. The thought is, you've got the 8 Mile corridor from Hagerty to Angster Road, you've got eight gas stations up and down that whole corridor. Do we really need another one there? And we have, you know, as mentioned before, we have a lot of other restaurants around, do we need another facility there? It seems ludicrous to go to all this trouble and then have another gas station that we've got, and on top of that, you've got all the traffic from the intersection with the expressway there in Hagerty, it's a nasty mess with traffic all the time, and I can just see this bogging down the Newburgh Corner a lot more. And as mentioned previously, you've got the Speedway just down on 7 Mile. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, you've got two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Paul Durwick, I've lived in Livonia for 50-plus years, always in the northern section, and this is my fourth house. So Livonia's my community, and I think I'm well-staked in it and want the best for it. I live west of Gil Road, just south of 8 Mile. I use 8 Mile frequently, throughout the week, and weekends, mornings, noon, during the day, at night. I don't see some of the objections that I've heard at the last couple of meetings about traffic flow and congestion. I seldom wait more than one light at Newburgh going westbound to get through the intersection. Today, there were many comments about Sheets. I went to see Sheets, I'd never been to one. I wanted to see what the hoopla was about, I was pleasantly surprised. It was a very nice facility and a top-notch building and pump area. Only 12 pump stations, they said in the presentation. Most speedways have twice that amount. It's congregant, it's congested, it's hard to get in, it's hard to get out. What else does Sheets bring to us? Of course, we talked about cleanliness, I'm not gonna bore you with any comments about that, but I'm talking about the mom and pops that I was when my girls were young, looking for someplace to get a quick nutritious bite to eat for those girls while I took them to their dance lessons or swim lessons or soccer practices. Sheets would certainly fill the bill for something like that. Not everyone in the world is a nine-to-five.
Sir, that's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good evening, sir. Name and address, two minutes, and the floor is yours.
All right. My name is Kenneth Moore, I live in Deer Creek, Livonia. The zoning change and waiver should not be allowed. As currently zoned, the property allows for a wide variety of local low-impact businesses which better fit this area. Consider when this proposed business, being Sheets, closes in the future. Once the zoning has been changed, it cannot be changed back. The door would then be open to a variety of businesses that are totally incompatible with this area. Do not make changes for the short-term, or for short-term gains that create long-term negative outcomes for the area. The proposed zoning change goes directly opposite as to what is in the Livonia Vision 21 Plan. The plan marks this area as being recreational, a change from its current C1 designation. Does Livonia throw out its plans as soon as someone asks it to do so? The city of Livonia is not obligated to change its goals and zoning to suit a individual business or landowner's desire. This business knew and accepted the limitations of the property's use long ago, and by business, I mean the owner of the land. And finally, it was brought up that this property may have issues that need to be resolved. If that is so... If that is so, this is the concern of the landowner, not the City of Livonia. Just as if a resident's property has issues, it's theirs to deal with, and it's not the concern of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Before I get started, can you pull up the site plan again for Sheets?
No, right now, we've gotten past that, I understand that-
Well, I wanna-
I know, just for audience communication-
All right. I'm Dave Hall, I live at 37300 West 8 Mile, Farmington Hills. I am the guy that is gonna be most affected by this out of anybody here. I live directly across the street from this place. 24/7, 365 days a year, I'm gonna have to watch cars come in and out, and where they are gonna be turning in and coming out is directly in line with my bedroom window. I'm gonna have lights 24/7, 365 days a year, for the rest of my life. Think of that. The gentleman said, "Well, there's only 12 pumps or something." Well, guess what? The one pump's 50 yards away from my driveway. I don't need this. And talk about crime? Crime is gonna be unbelievable. I don't know what I'm gonna have to do to protect my family, but I'm gonna do what I gotta do. And that's a shame. I've lived here for 40 years. My wife and I run a business out of our yard, it's a small landscape business, we're also known as the Pumpkin Family. We have the pumpkins, we sell them. Trying to get out in the morning, the gentleman, the traffic is horrendous in the morning. I have trailers that I've gotta cross, three lanes to make, to go east onto 8 Mile. Now, if there's a truck, that, if a car lets me in, and I have a truck that, like a short-bed truck or something, I can't see the cars coming. I mean, it's a crapshoot. It's like, do you go? Do I stop? Do I wait? Do I, I mean, my kids have been T-boned pulling in. This is, we do not need this, this is gonna be horrendous. And the gentleman that wants to sell this to Sheets, well, he talks really good about Sheets, but he's probably got 500,000 reasons to like Sheets. We don't need this in our community. And the lady that said, "You know, only Livonia people you should listen to?" Well, no, man, I'm a Farmington resident, this affects me the most.
Thank you very much. Going back over here. Good evening.
Hi, Susan Lapierre, 37162 Fairfax, Willow Woods subdivision. After the first meeting, I decided I would go out and look at the Sheets in Romulus. And I thought, "Oh yeah, this is just perfect. When you look south, it's 94 and the airport. When you look west, it's an open land, no homes. You look east, no homes, empty lot. You look to the north, and you've got an office building. Why would Sheets have a problem there? There's no people. The only ones that come there are people who are gonna get gas off of 94. I live off of Newburgh, as you know, on 7 Mile where Willow Woods is. We have a new subdivision that's gonna be opening up just south of our neighborhood. The only way in, the only way out, Newburgh. Our subdivision, Willow Woods, only one way in, one way out, Newburgh. Across the street on St. Martin's, one way in, one way out, Newburgh. The new townhouses they're gonna be building, which would be west of Speedway, is gonna add 100 townhouses. Then, after listening to the Sheets representative talk about the food, you've got 1 million choices on food? If that's your big concentration, open a restaurant and keep the gas station out of our neighborhood. Thank you."
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Julia Yasuhara, and I live at 36241 in the Gulf Ridge subdivision. If the majority of the people that live here, and those closest to the site, do not want something in their city, one could debate that the reason is almost irrelevant. It's our city. We are not saying that we don't want Sheets in the city. I think many people can appreciate the upstanding company that Sheets is compared to others. What we are saying is we don't want it on this particular site in the city. We are saying that we do not want to change the zoning because we feel the current zoning fits the type of businesses we are willing to have there. If it doesn't fit with the intent and the purpose of the, I'm sorry, it doesn't fit with the intent and the purpose of the surrounding areas, Greenmead, the golf course, and of course, our close homes. I suggest you ask the people who support Sheets exactly how close they live to the site, and take that into consideration. Please represent the citizens who voted for you. Represent the citizens who are closest and most affected by this decision to change the zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Betsy Calhoun, 33023 Granada. Please listen to the majority of residents, local people, who are expressing serious reservations about this project, some of them with pertinent specialized professional experience. And the big picture is that the city is committing itself to promoting Greenmead Historical Park as a family-friendly destination based on its historical nature. It's not a good fit to have a gas station, you know, honky-tonk kind of thing perhaps, on the corner. Nobody's gonna run out of gas trying to get to Greenmead, as you know. Again, the people are speaking, it's important to listen to them. Clearly, the environmental issues need to be, would need to be more closely examined. You can say, "Oh, we have the EPA, we have this." But this is our community, we have sometimes not paid enough attention to the waterways that run through our city, and it's something important to consider. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, for the record, you've got two minutes.
Holly Good, 20411 Wayne Road, we're in Deer Creek subdivision. I grew up here, I went to Stevenson High School. I left here for a while, I was in Chicago for 20 years. I came back during the pandemic. My choice to live here in Livonia is because it's safe, it's a beautiful area. We've got a park with a hockey rink, for all you hockey fans, right across the street in Farmington, that they've been keeping up really well. We've got Greenmead that is bringing more and more projects and gatherings, et cetera, and building that community. The golf course doing its best, but they still have a lot of activity, I mean, I see people out there golfing into December. In any case, the fact is, we don't need something that is gonna bring high traffic. I have a seven-year-old son, I have a lot of friends that also came from Chicago and are living back here in the area. If you wanna see a lot of young people start to leave and not buying up here in Livonia, then put that Sheets in. That's bullshit. We don't want it here, it's not safe. The marketing guy from Sheets did not talk about the traffic. I'm in marketing, I know the amount of traffic that's gonna be coming through there. It's not about the traffic patterns, it's the amount of people, and the type of people, and what they're doing there, and it's 24/7. I don't want it, I will be here every day fighting for it.
Good evening. Name and address.
John Pastor, 33461 Capri Court. I'm actually in support of this. As many of you know that this is a, this property is already zoned commercial, it is already a 24-hour site. This borders a golf course and Greenmead, there is no Livonia residents that are affected directly by this property. Yes, there's a couple of Farmington Hills people, I appreciate that. But I guess my question to a lot of the folks that are out here, where were they when Speedway wanted to do 24/7? Where were you when the Krogers on 8 Mile went in? Where were you when the Speedway at Farmington and 8 Mile? What about the gas station that's going in at Plymouth and Merriman? That's gonna convert over to a restaurant? I don't hear anybody complaining about those things. Sheets is, I think, brings up the value of the gas stations in our community. I think now, our gas stations are gonna have to come up to their standard, not to the standard that they are. Have you been to our gas stations around here? Except for the Speedway on 7 Mile, that I'm aware of, they're the only ones that have actually done something to make their establishment better for Livonia. This is, and I shudder at the thought that somebody thinks, in the city, the great city of Livonia, that we're not safe. We are constantly among the 10 cities, safest cities in the country for our size. Our police department is top-notch, and you folks condemn them, saying that they're gonna not be there, not gonna protect it? Let me tell you, people don't do crime in Livonia because we get our people. The police get their people. All right? And just because some of the planning commissioners that say they've been there 40 years, doesn't mean that you can't have it here.
That's time, Mr. Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi. My name is Jim Katerba, I live in Willow Woods subdivision, my address is 19710 Liverpool. The only one thing that I have time to talk about today, because of the two-minute limitation, is I wanna talk about the need and the demand that Sheets claims is here in Livonia for the proposed truck stop that's disguised as a gas station. At the September 10th planning meeting, Mr. Sawicki over there laid out their only argument for approving the petition. I don't know if you were there or not, but he said, and I'm quoting, "This is going to serve a great demand in the community." Hmm, really? What bull? Here's the facts. Let me ask you, when was the last gas station built in Livonia? Do any of you, no? Are you ready? It was 2013. Soak on that. 2013, that's 12 years ago. And how ironic, it was the Kroger gas station down 8 Mile, half a mile away from this proposed site, right? That she is petitioning. Now, ask yourself, why hasn't anyone tried to build another gas station in the past 12 years? The answer's simple. The current population of Livonia is down 16% from where it was in its high point 40 years ago. And that's when most of the gas stations were open. So the demand and the need for the new gas stations is shrinking, and has been shrinking for a long time. And let's be honest, Kroger only opened their gas station because it was right in front of their store, and that's part of their brand. If it wasn't for Kroger, it might be 20 years that we opened a new gas station, 'cause there isn't a demand as Sheets claims there to be. So I think that the need and the demand is a fabricated one.
That's time, sir.
And I, the last thing I wanna say is, the council, do you really wanna be known-
Thank you.
-as a place with one more gas station that no one asked for?
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening. Name and address, you've got two minutes, and tell us when you're ready.
Patty Rigio, 37204 Breton Drive. Speaking of need and demand, some of you have said that this would be a good development because you don't want more empty buildings in the city, particularly the empty Rite Aid on this corner. The Rite Aid has only been closed for a year, yet Sears and Kmart have been closed for a while. In contrast, the Rite Aid at 6 in Newburgh has been closed, but there doesn't seem to be any urgent discussion about filling that empty building. Jumping into the wrong opportunity to urgently fill this building is just foolish. We need to exercise patience for the benefit of the community and the residents. The city council should be refocusing on empty building concerns. Think about it, if more gas stations are open in Livonia against the facts of the trends that my neighbor just mentioned, then the city has a much bigger problem, empty gas stations. The economics are simple, the total number of gallons of gas pumped daily in Livonia isn't going up when the population is going down. A new gas station will just slice into the total demand, and it will, it'll be a smaller slice for everybody. The future of Sheets, the future, even without Sheets, we can expect gas stations to go out of business. This empty, this empty building concern of the city council should be something that you guys should think about. An empty Rite Aid is the least of your concerns. Opening a new gas station only has more downsides for the city. Another fact worth mentioning is market saturation. Do you know that there are 16 gas stations that are on the opposite side of the Livonia bordering streets? Finally, Sheets buildings are accustomed to Sheets only. No other gas station has a similar operation. A new Sheets gas station, if a Sheets gas station goes out of business, we would have an even bigger issue. A closed Sheets gas station will always be just that. A closed Sheets gas station.
I appreciate you guys with the hands, that's a brilliant, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Rodney Rigio. My wife, my beautiful wife just spoke, and I always listen to her, and you should too. Okay?
Hang on, hang on. I think you're all, I think everybody's getting that.
But what I wanna say is, what I really wanna say is that the committee, the rezoning committee that put this through to come over here, they were all, they were all there, they set up and did it by phone. And that's not right. They should all, if you wanna change it from a C1 to a C2, everybody should be there and vote, in person. But they didn't do that. So what I wanna tell you is this, I've lived here for, going on 40 years in Livonia, and I went from Reynolds Mavene to Willow Woods subdivision. And the reason why we moved in the area is because of serenity, okay? You have, it's a very unique part of the city. In regards that, you have fields, you have, you have places for ice arena, for, if you wanna go play hockey, or if you wanna go to Greenmead and plant. We don't need a gas station, or a truck stop, or a food, a top-end food market, when all you have to do is go on the other end of Livonia to the Livonia College, and have, they have a culinary school there that has top-notch food, if you want top-notch food. Okay, why go, why go to a gas station and get food? I don't know if you wanna get gas there, or would you eat the food and you come out and you got gas? So what I'm trying to tell you is this.
Can someone give me a red flag, please?
Let's make a no vote on it. You heard the people. The people are the one that voted you all in here. Oh, there goes my-
That's time. Thank you, Mr. Rigio. I wanna go to this side?
Okay.
Name and address, you've got two minutes.
Yeah, my name is Nancy Philpott, I'm at 20645 Gulf Ridge Circle, Gulf Ridge Villa Homes. I have a prepared list of things that I wanted to talk about tonight, and basically, I don't wanna bore you, I know you've gotten a lot of these already, same thing, and it's the same issues. They're not gonna go away. And when you talk about the traffic, I can verify the traffic at that corner now, perhaps maybe not in the morning when you're going to work, but my husband and I are on a golf league at Whispering Willows, and it usually starts at 5 o'clock in the evening on Friday. And I can tell you that the only way we can get to that golf course is if we go out of our sub, down to Gil, up to 7, and come back, because we are not able to make a left turn into that parking lot. In addition to that, you can't, the way people drive today, you can't bank on the fact that somebody's not gonna come down that right-turn-only lane and take the whole side of your car off. So as far as the traffic goes, there is a lot of traffic there already, and it's because of residential. Any, I mean, not residential, but of the things that are there. If Greenmead's having an event, they have to pretty much close down Newburgh, so that people can get in there. I mean, come on. And now Sheets is gonna be there? If the food is so great at Sheets, like everybody says, then we're gonna have the same thing with the drive-through there as you have with Chick-fil-A. And now, we're gonna have extra people out on Newburgh, or however you get into that, into that drive-through, backed up there waiting in line for this delicious food. I would just like to end tonight, I've heard so many things here, and you know, you don't want it in the city center, and it's supposed to be not a gas station, it's a convenience store and a restaurant that just happens to have gas. They don't want it in the city center, but yet, everybody on this council here is okay about dumping it in our, in our neighborhood, and that's not fair. So I would ask you to really think about what you're talking about today. It's not about how good or how bad Sheets, it's that it's not the place for that kind of a business. If he wants to move this way, go up and down I-75, there's plenty of spots.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Greg Ralco, live in Gulf Ridge Villa. I sat with our city attorney, Mr. Fisher, to understand your roles in Vision 21 Master Plan, future land use, and the 20-year Greenmead Plan. He told me, and I quote, "These plans are to be used by the Planning Commission and the city council as their guideline. Although the plans are not part of the official city ordinance-" Although the plans are not part of the official city ordinance, any zoning decisions need to be considered the goals, policies, and objectives of these plans as to inform future land decisions." For the record, the future land use for this corner is designated to eventually be parks and recreation. The attention is not to go in the opposite direction, to rezone the corner C2 with waivers, to rezone it highway commercial. The Vision 21 authors were very clear on this point, and it makes total sense because the corner, the corner is surrounded by Whispering Willows and sits next to Greenmead. Ironically, the Greenmead Plan was adopted by this very chamber in early 2023. In that plan, it says, and I quote, "This plan recognized that Greenmead Farms is an important historical asset, and this plan has to be, has been developed to limit the permanent physical interventions closest to Greenmead Farm and historical village." A Sheets right across the street, 50 feet away, is not what these authors were referring to when they wrote this plan. They said it loud and clear, "No." We've been talking about this for six months. A committee of the whole is just more, six more months of conversation. Let's be clear, dragging this out will not weaken the opposition. Forget it. You hit, you poked a sleeping bear.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Good evening. Name and address, you've got two minutes.
Yep. Christine Pagnuco, I live in the Willowood subdivision, right off of Newburgh by Eight Mile. I know everyone has said so many different things about this whole prospect tonight. I just wanted to say just simply, as one of the 95% of the residents who were polled in the surrounding neighborhoods that have expressed their disinterest in this proposition, please listen to the residents that are living right in that area. I am not going to be visiting the Sheets for their clean bathroom. I am not planning on going there to get some food. I'm going to have to deal with a lot of the traffic and everything else, like everyone has said, but please listen to the voices of your constituents that live right in the area, where 95% have already sent a petition against it, please. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other audience communications? Seeing none, I'm going to go back to council. I want to thank you all for keeping this as professional as it could be, honestly. There's a lot of energy, there's a lot of passion, that's what makes this city great, and I appreciate you guys keeping it in context. I think I only had to hit it like 26 times, and that's fine. But no, no, I do appreciate it. And with that being said, we do have a committee of a hold that is on the current discussion for a vote, and in this, part of the deal is with being council president, I'm going to pass the gavel to our vice president so I can speak on this item, now that the audience communication, and with that, Madam Vice President, may I have the floor?
You may.
All right. So, I will not be supporting the committee of a whole, all right? So, again, I agree with a lot that has been said here. That's, to me, committee of a whole is for further study. We've looked at this, I've looked at this, we've all looked at this, hours upon hours upon hours. I actually went down, for the record, I went down to the Romulus store. I remember seeing one in Pittsburgh. It's a cool restaurant, I'm not going to lie, it's a cool gas station, or whatever you want to call it. But the one unique thing is, is the right development for the right place. And the sir over there that lives in Farmington Hills, our zoning is modeled over creating harmony in the surrounding area. And listen, while I might not be accepting your votes, you're in the surrounding area because you're 50 feet, your bedroom window is 50 feet away from that. So, listen, we have to work with developers, and the one thing that I've learned on being on city council is you see the dynamic of both, and the energy that comes up, and I still remember the first meeting that we had with even some of the people that we've talked to, and you get fired up, it becomes personal. And I'm trying to say, hey, guys, listen, we're city council, we're not, you know, this is how the process works, and that's why I truly appreciate it, because being in this seat, it's tough at times, I promise you, it's not as easy, especially not to speak half the time instead of passing the gavel. But some of the others, the technical things that I'm pointing out on this specific spot is, there is, you know, if you go to even some of the items, the proposed change in zoning is not needed to develop this property. So, there's not a need to change the zoning. Secondly, we do have a drive-through that changes the use. Stormwater management, listen, guys, that's going to be, if this project got approved, that goes through a rigorous, a rigorous process. So, I'm not discounting the stormwater, I think that a lot of the things would have to look at that. My biggest thing is, is we're looking at a 24-hour gas station when we had a Rite Aid, and I could tell you this, yeah, Rite Aid was 24 hours, but I, or no, maybe it wasn't, but even, no, hang on. Okay, that one wasn't, but even still, even if that was a 24-hour Rite Aid, I could bet you that if you go there at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, it won't rival the amount of people that will be at a Sheets. Okay? So, that is kind of the context that I'm putting it in, and it's tough, honestly. You know, you guys elect us and we represent you, and right now, the petitioner, and I got to call it out, and I hate to do it, but it said, "Meeting the need of our residents." And I could tell you by this and all the emails that I've received, and I, you know, I'm not going to speak for the rest of council, but it's been overwhelmingly a no. And for that reason, I'm not going to support the committee of a whole, and I will support a denying resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else from council have comments? Mrs. Bazinski?
Yes, I'll speak, and just say, you know, again, appreciate everyone coming out here and sharing their points of views. You know, it's definitely something we've heard a lot from a lot of residents about. I also went to Sheets down in Romulus, so I could better understand the business model and see if I felt that it fit into our community. And honestly, I just, I don't feel compelled to rezone this property into a higher-use area. I have a lot of environmental concerns, to be perfectly honest, and not because I think a tanker is going to, you know, do something, it's just, we have waterways there, we have green space, and runoff, and even small amounts can have a serious environmental impact, and I do care deeply about sustainability and making sound decisions as it relates to environment when it requires us to make a change in our ordinance. So, for that reason, that all of you guys have showed up, you've communicated us en masse, we've been presented to now multiple times by Sheets with their presentation as well, I do feel like we have sufficient information to make a decision today, so I will be voting no on the committee of the whole and support you.
Please hold your applause, just, you know, we got it. Are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the audience and everybody else for and against this petition for coming out. It takes, it takes a lot of people to look at issues and to present their cases, and it's admirable that you're here tonight. It's been a long evening, it's been a long week, and it's only Monday. So, you know, and what I said earlier about, we basically have had a committee of the whole meeting, we've had the petitioner now twice present his case and the petition, in all fairness. To me, it's not the location, that's where I fall on it, it's not that your place is bad and not orderly lit, or any of the rest of those kinds of things. You run a nice operation, it looks like, in many cases, but I don't think it belongs there, sir, I just don't. Like I told you, from day one, I didn't think it would be a good place to put it. We take an oath of office, and I take that very seriously, because I've served in government a long time, way too long, and it's, it's time that we look at things and not kick a can down the road again, because I don't want to be unfair to you as a petitioner, and I certainly don't want to be unfair to the residents that pay their taxes and do all the things they do. And for that reason, I will not support committee of the whole. We just had a committee of the whole. If not, we would have voted on this and stuck it in committee of the whole. That's the way it used to be done. I'm an old-timer, I've been on this council a couple of times, and so, that's not the way this new council does it right now, and I appreciate that, not putting down my colleagues, each of them are great people, and they do, they work very hard. So, I want to thank you again for bringing the petition forward, and thank you to our audience that came here tonight. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and thanks to both of our chairs this evening. It is not an easy job chairing a meeting. I understand people are passionate about issues, but we do have to have rules, we do have to have decorum. We've been, you know, the same procedures have been going on for a very long time, there's nothing new, and there's been other passionate items, and when you take all that in consideration and the totality of all that, we do have to have just procedures and rules in order, so I do appreciate the residents for participating in that. I do appreciate the residents for emailing me, I don't think I've ever gotten this many emails and phone calls and text messages and calls for and against. You know, for anybody that wants to run for council, get ready, because you will have these issues come up, and that's why we do it, and I understand that, but I just want to say thanks to the residents. I'm okay with going to the committee of the whole when there is opportunity to maybe learn more, maybe there can be some changes to the project, maybe there isn't going to be any changes to the project, maybe there's more information for residents to digest, but I'm willing to go to the committee of the whole, but who knows? I mean, one thing I've learned serving on city council, you never know where a vote's going to go until the moment the vote is taken. But again, I do appreciate my colleagues, I do appreciate our chair and Mrs. Chair, although I like the Madam Vice President better than the President, but I do appreciate everybody, and we'll kind of see where it goes. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Love.
You're not feeling the love?
No.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, there's, there was a lot of excellent points that were brought up here tonight, and you know, it's not, this is nothing that we haven't seen in the letters, the calls, the emails, the conversations that I've had over, over the phone with residents, a lot for, a lot against, you know, but our job up here is to make good, informed decisions and not make something political, and what is good for the city of Livonia. And keeping the city of Livonia moving forward and putting good, solid businesses in places is something that we have to take into consideration. And I was urging, and I'm still urging my council, my fellow council members, to take consideration and put this in committee of the whole, and we can think about it, review this, see what the plus, the pluses, plus side is, and balance this out along with the negatives. And I understand there's a lot of residents here that are against that, but a lot of them are from Farmington Hills, and I am... Please. I am a city of Livonia councilman. I was voted in by the residents of the city of Livonia to make the decisions for them, not for Farmington Hills. And we, if anyone here has paid attention...
Excuse me, Mr. Morgan, please allow Mr. Morgan to speak. You'll give him the right respect. Thank you.
So, the situation is, is that I have to take that into consideration. We're taking a look at what financial aspects this will have with the city of Livonia, what environmental aspects, what traffic aspects it'll have, and crime. There was a lot of misconception here from the residents that did come up about the crime going up. That's not likely to happen. I mean, Livonia is a... Once again, the city of Livonia Police Department is excellent police department. We police that area a lot. Police officers are up at Greenmead, police officers are over there on Eight Mile, and it is a highway. Eight Mile is M-102. So, that the change that Sheets is asking for is not inappropriate, and I needed time to review that, and I think it's good for the city council to review every aspect of this and take a look at that. So, that's where I stand on this. I will be for putting it in a committee of the whole, and I will not be for the denial at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Counsel? Anyone else? I'm going to go back to the petitioner and just let you have a quick closing statement, and then we'll take the vote.
Thank you very much. So, I wanted to answer some of the further concerns that were brought up this evening that maybe I didn't address in my initial presentation. I'm sorry, can you all hear me? Okay. So, firstly is traffic. So, we did conduct a traffic impact study here, it has been given to the city engineer as well as the Wayne County Engineering Department, and they have both reviewed it. So, that is something that we are working on and will be reflected in our site plans. You have to remember, convenience stores are convenient, right? They are not a destination. We capture a majority of the traffic that was already passing by, and we put it right back out on the road. We routinely work with government, just like city engineer and the county engineer, like I mentioned, to make sure that the traffic accesses that we're proposing and the nearby traffic flow is safe when we put in a new development. I wanted to reiterate crime, I know I touched on it a little bit, and there is some misconceptions. So, as I said previously, if crime exists, it already exists. There is absolutely no reason to believe that Sheets creates crime. We've been in business for 70-plus years, we wouldn't have been business for 70-plus years if that's what was happening. We have policies, procedures, systems in place that deter it, and we are very confident that we deter crime. And again, to prove it, we have been a top 100 workplace for the past decade. Employee, if they didn't feel safe coming to work, we probably wouldn't be on that list. Environmental, I didn't talk about environmental, but I do want to point out, it is a very important subject, and no one takes it more importantly than we do. We maintain a nearly 100%, 100% technical compliance rate with EPA. We have third parties inspect our systems at four times the actual requirement that is required. We install state-of-the-art systems that far exceed the requirements in all states we operate in, including the state of Michigan. We have two entire departments at Sheets that are dedicated to this cause, and again, I want to remind you, 100%, nearly 100% technical compliance rate with the EPA, whereas the average of the competition in the state of Michigan, only 70%. And then finally, I wanted to talk about, just remind you who we are and why we're here and why we think our offer resonates with the city of Livonia, where the ultimate one-stop-shop helps customers combine the shopping trip that they are going to go get gas, they are going to get food, they are going to go get grocery items, all into one stop, anytime of day, any day of year. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, we do have a motion on the floor to put the item into committee. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
No.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
President McCullough.
No.
Vice President Tashnik? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bazinski?
No.
Vice President Tashnik?
No. Motion fails. All right, we have a second motion on the floor, we have a motion to deny. Counsel, is there any conversation or comments at this time?
No, Madam Chair, if I may.
Ms. Toy.
I made the motion to deny because, once again, I don't, I want to create harmony in these areas, and in order to do that, unfortunately, we're going to have to deny this if we, if my colleagues are able to vote for that. I appreciate my other colleague trying to go to committee of the whole, but again, I think most of what, what we talked about was out on the table, and we, we've heard it, and we're hearing repeats now, which, quite frankly, I'm getting too old and tired at this point, and I'm sure many of you are, and in no disrespect to you, sir, but, you know, I, I think I could hear it all right, I don't need to hear it quite yet, so, appreciate everything, colleagues, and thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me, and I, let's move forward.
Mr. Morgan.
Sorry.
Mrs. Sheil, go ahead.
Thank you. I was looking forward to going to the committee of the whole. Many of you may not know, but I'm new to city council for this term, and so I was not at the public hearing, and I would have liked to have some more information. Plus, if someone on council wants to go to committee of the whole, which Mr. Morgan wanted to, it's nice as a, you know, as a fellow councilperson to support that, just so that all the information can be there, so that everybody can take a vote, yea or nay, up or down. So, I will not be supporting denying this at this time, because I really would have wanted to go to committee of the whole. to go to Committee of the Whole. Now that I'm speaking, I also want to thank everybody for all their emails and for reaching out on this for or against. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Madam Clerk, we have a motion on the floor, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
No.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. Motion passes. Denied. I know, well, I know we have a lot of emotions here, I know we have mixed emotions on this issue, but please, a little decorum still.
There we go.
At this point, I'm going to pass the gavel back to President McCullough.
I don't know if I want it, but that's fine.
I can keep it if you want. It's fine, the next one's easy.
No, thank you all for, thank you all. Do you want to, you want to take a minute?
You do. I found that very hard, but, you know, it is what it is.
No, let's finish this, and then let's take a break.
Item 18.
So everybody, we have two more minutes, or two more items. Thank you, and hey. All right. Moving on to item number 18 is a request to approve an hourly rate increase, comes to us from the Department of Public Service, or Civil Service. I'm just going to wait, guys, just try to make your way out.
Please, we still have a committee meeting, sir.
Guys, I'm going to do just a five-minute recess right now. All right, five-minute recess, or 10-minute recess. 10-minute recess. Item number 18, and I appreciate if you guys have 18 or 19, thanks for hanging out. It was probably fairly entertaining. Item number 18 is a request to approve hourly rate increase, comes to us from the Department of Civil Service for the student substitute librarian classification, counsel.
Mr. President, support.
So approving from Laura and support from Rob. Who wants, anybody want to speak on it?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mrs. Leibel. If you want to introduce yourself first, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President. Good evening, my name is Janine Leibel, I'm here on behalf of the Civil Service Department. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just, I just had a quick question on this. It looks like we have substitute versus a student substitute, same pay, are the qualifications the same?
So, if I could walk you through a short story about that, we changed our qualifications for librarian one, and we did it to attract more candidates and retain some of our current library employees. It used to be that you needed 20 credit hours, we slid that back to 18 credit hours of your master's degree and an ability to obtain a full master's within two years. We then took that standard for our librarian one, and we matched the qualifications and the pay rate for the student substitute librarian as well as the substitute librarian, so that way it was fair and equitable to all employees.
Thank you. I just wanted a quick synopsis.
Anything further from council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item carries, seven to zero. Going to jump right into item number 19, is a proposed amendment to the Livoney Court of Ordinances, comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to petition 2024-10-03-02, submitted by Andrea and Benjamin Edwards, requesting to vacate portions of an existing storm drainage easement at 18586 Comstock. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I believe this calls for a first read.
Yes.
I'll be happy to offer a first read on this.
Perfect, thank you. We have a first read, anything further comments from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? All right, we have no new business. I'm going to go back to the audience for items that were not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, you can come up, and you'd have three minutes. Seeing none, I'm going to go back to council, and I'm going to probably essentially show seven. I'm just going to, we're going to, because Livonia TV needs to take a quick timeout, so I'm going to just have a five-minute recess, and we'll jump into the study right at 9:55, if that's okay. Thank you, Livonia, formally.